All right. The time is six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could begin with the remote attendance?
Oh, actually.
No?
If you wouldn't mind being.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Alderman Berg.
Yes, your honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of First Ward Alderman Scott Williams, Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Fourth Ward Alderman Dick Potter. I'm sorry, Dick Potter is not with us today. Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Scoonmaker, Seventh Ward Alderman Mike Waldron. At the Committee of the Whole and City Council meetings of June 2nd, 2020.
Thank you, Alderman Berg. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Moyer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, indicate by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you very much, Alderman Berg. On this evening, we're beginning, we have, we have two things we're beginning with. We have a proclamation this evening, and then I've invited Reverend Dwight Ford to address the council. We're going to begin with the proclamation. The proclamation is Moms Demand Action to declare June 5th, 2020 as Gun Violence Awareness Day. Janine, would you read the proclamation, please?
Sure. Whereas 96 Americans are killed by gun violence every day, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides each year. Whereas Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade in January 2013, and who just weeks later was tragically shot and killed, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 30, I'm sorry, and the 96 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Now therefore, Stephanie Acre, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim June 5th, 2020 as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Thank you very much, Janine. I, we have a couple of representatives joining us today. We have Audrey Adamson and Kaylee Rogers, and I'd like to invite you both to address the council.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I think the proclamation really said a lot. So I won't get too much in detail here, but I just wanted to thank you all for taking the step to honor Hadiya Pendleton, as well as the, actually, 100 Americans who are killed every day by guns now. And, and also to take the step to recognize that this is a huge problem, and we need to act. And we need, we have work to do. So I just want to thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kaylee. Audrey, would you like to address the council?
Yes, thank you. So as a Moline citizen, I do want to say thank you very much for taking this time to make this proclamation, and, you know, taking the time to recognize that this is an important issue in our community and in the surrounding communities, and that hopefully, we can all work together to reduce gun violence in the Quad Cities and in Moline. So, thank you.
And I'd like to thank you as a mom for organizing your group and, as well as your advocacy efforts in this, in this work. It's important work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd now like to turn the council's attention to, to reflect on the death of George Floyd, and how it's impacted our, our community, our state, and our nation. And I've invited Reverend Dwight Ford to join us this evening to offer his perspective and reflection on this event, and how it has impacted the community as a whole. Dwight Ford is the Director of Project NOW, and he is also partnering with us to address digital equity in the community. He is a community leader, though, and his voice is important at a time like this. And I, I'd like for the council to please direct your attention to Reverend Ford. Reverend Ford?
Yes, good evening, mayor, and to the council. Thank you for granting space and opportunity just to share a few reflections and thoughts, and also some possible next steps as we address the very difficult reality. I would not be truthful if I said this isn't a difficult time. And as you know, with the killing of Mr. Floyd, it brings up so much that we, at times, can believe we're past and beyond. And so many times when this happens, people try to, at times, unfortunately, run back to the spaces they're most comfortable from their own positions, and their own thoughts, and their own opinions, and we miss opportunity. It is my sincere hope that we don't, that we do not miss another opportunity to build authentic and courageous community, that we can in fact fill in the gaps and address things that are longstanding. So many times, these kind of things kind of wipe the thin veneer of progress, and we see the underbelly of realities of disparity that was, that has been there for a long time in a pent-up frustration. I know my time is short tonight, and so I sincerely hope at the outset, as I kind of jump in, that there will be more time, and I'll be more than willing to adjust my schedule to meet with any one of the team members in the staff itself, with the city of Moline, of course, with any of the representatives and your particular wards and constituents that may want to facilitate conversation, dialogue, and of course, action. So I needed to say that upfront. I, I want to take the, jump right into this, because again, when we're talking about this thin veneer that has been placed, we have to confront very difficult conversations. And one of the hardest things for Americans, and dare I say, city governments, citizens, to address is white and black issues. And we know that our communities are much more diverse than just simple white and black. But at times, we revert back to this, because these are, or this is a reality that has yet to be flushed out and challenged on every step, so that we can remedy the things that still call us, cause us the most pain. And I thought through a few things of what I would like to share with you that I believe that could at least help us to take another step forward together. The first thing is, this is on top of COVID, and so I want to put that in, in perspective. This is on top of the pandemic. People were already pent up with frustration. We had several killings in the black community that individuals who are off from work that spent all day watching news feeds and having time to think deeply about these things. And so, and not just the black community, as you have witnessed, the protests have not just been a singular demographic. It is made up of young and old, male and female, and every race and hue and ethnicity that is made up of our communities. And so this has really got to the underpinning of what it means, again, to be human and to share time and space together. And so when I, when I thought about this, and all of this frustration, people are afraid. Forty million people are accessing unemployment insurance. The stimulus money may have already run out for some. Individuals are already on edge, dealing with depression, anxiety, and national grief. When you watch these feeds over and over again of Ahmaud Arbery, who was shot down in Georgia, running on the street, and you see, again, white-black interaction that has been deadly. And then, of course, Breonna Taylor, who was in her own home with a no-knock warrant, and in that facility where the man that they were looking for had already been in custody for four hours, and her body is riddled with eight bullets, and she dies in that space. And so these, this is long before the reality of George Floyd's killing on the side of the street. But it all has something to do with it, in addition to COVID-19. So what I would like to do very quickly is offer these four things. One is that we began to really work hard to re-envision what our city, our community could look like. And I say "our." I, I lived in the city of Moline and had a wonderful experience living in Moline when I returned back from the United States Marine Corps. And so I've had space there, and I've dealt with city government. And I am also a local pastor. Our church started in Moline. We have a cathedral in downtown Rock Island, but we maintain a church in Moline. And I've helped individuals purchase their first homes in your city. And so it's a, it's a shared experience when I've gone in and blessed their homes, or been invited for their house, open houses. And so that's been a wonderful experience for me. But if we can step back and, and not do what so many around the country are doing, is trying to dig into our own positions and really re-envision what the future and the possibilities could be like. And that really requires that we give space for uncomfortable realities, that we become comfortable being uncomfortable in the sense of even the preamble, preamble of the Constitution. When people hear "no justice, no peace," sometimes that makes people really tense. But it's in the Constitution that we would establish justice before we even think about tranquility. And so that's a playbook that has already been established, that people would cry out for peace and justice, that they would go hand in hand and marry in a relationship. And justice is, for me, justice is nothing more than love dressed up in work clothes. And so when we really get a chance to see what our communities could look like and really walk through here, how can we see it differently? How can we see ourselves differently? And, and be able to entertain the, the hard concepts in the language of social justice and not run from that. I don't, I don't always put "social" in front of it. I think the term "justice" is all by itself good enough. But I understand the language of social justice. But also hear the reality of systemic racism, and don't run from that, that we would be willing to encounter and have conversations about it, because many of the things we still confront in our communities are longstanding problems. It didn't start with your tenure or mine. And, but we should have a responsibility of turning the tide and making sure that we do our part. And then how do we see others? Ralph Ellison, in his wonderful work at This Little Man, said, "I am a man of fiber and liquids," and goes on, talks about substance. "I might even be said to possess a mind, but I'm invisible, you see, because people refuse to see me." And when people are invisible to politics and to bodies and to government, they lash out in different ways. And so if they cannot be seen, they will refuse to be unheard. And so what happens now is that they are getting our attention in more than one way or another. And now it is our responsibility is to respond to the language that they're using. It is not always the language that we would say that is appropriate. It is language, of course, that is, would be kind of the heartbreak and full of disdain. But nonetheless, people are speaking. And so how do we hear and find a way to adjust ourselves to have a decent dialogue about how we move forward? And then how do we rewrite, or rewrite the narratives? Because so often enough, we all have our personal experiences. You, me, and everybody else in our community have their personal experiences, and we bring those to bear in any encounter. But what we're really fighting for is how do we start a really listening and learning circle? Your, your city can do this. We can do, we can pull this off together. And how do we encounter the data that we see and realize that the data also has a color to it? Not just the poverty. I work in the area of poverty elimination. This has been my life, outside of theology and my commitment of going through formal education for such. This has been my life. And so I'm very comfortable having anti-poverty dialogue and fighting for legislations for such. But I also have to admit, there's a colored demographic to that as well. So after you start looking at the data, and we realize there's a color attached to that, then we can step back and say, how do we find a way to hear from the people that are most at disadvantage because of this reality? And then we can have a better sense of understanding, not necessarily agreement, but understanding. Whenever you or I or others approach any relationship based on agreement, then once we disagree, we have nothing to fall back on. But if we work at finding a better way to understand the reality that we both exist in, we can possibly find our way to having a chance to agree upon something that is mutually beneficial. And so then, after that, we can start thinking about reframing the issue. The issue, for me, is not the violence or the destruction of property, although that is an issue. The real issue is the longstanding disparity and the racial challenges that individuals, not just people of color, but black people are facing. And so for me, how do I walk my way back to that, that permeating reality that starts all of this and frustrates so many people? So it's reframed. I used to think that the real joy in looking at the pictures I have on my wall was the context, the beautiful painting, the landscapes, or whatever it may be. But the true thing that draws our attention in the right focus and the right direction is not the picture, it is the frame. If you and I don't have a proper frame, then we're going to miss the picture. And the reason why our eyes enjoy the picture so much, it is because of the frame that it exists in. And so if we can frame this the proper way and work to get our narratives correctly, then we can recommit to doing the most difficult thing that is in front of us. Your city, and the city of Moline, is a city that is used to rolling up its sleeves. I have no doubt about that. And the work that is before is very difficult. We have disparities in healthcare, housing, which I think the city of Moline, and I want to appreciate the city of Moline participating in the housing study. Some of other cities that participated alongside, but that document is very valuable in helping us to understand how we meet some of those needs and address the limited housing product that we have in all of the Quad Cities as a whole. And then I think we could think about employment, and how do we come to grips with particularly black unemployment, not just the unemployment numbers, but black unemployment. And we can start doing that now. We know right now there's going to be a shortage of summer employment for our children. Most cities enjoy summer employment as it pertains to parks and recs, and those jobs fill up so soon. I participated in city government with the city of Rock Island, your sister city, for years as the Director of the King Center. And so I know that reality, and there's those jobs fill up. But what about all of those other children? Now, the city is not helpless in this. The city is not hopeless in this. The city has power to bring people together. We can do public-private partnerships and create spaces, and utilize the funding that is already available and match it with our private partners to do something for at least a demographic or a population that doesn't get all of the opportunities that some get. And then we think about education, and then of course, justice. We can talk about what community policing really should look like, regardless of what the level of funding is, and how do we build meaningful, long-lasting, positive relationships that are based on understanding and not necessarily always agreement. We can do this. I, I cut across the field very quickly, because we have a chance to do two things, and it all has to do with our vision. We can look into the mirror, and no one looks into a mirror and walks away without making adjustments. Regardless of who we are, we look into the mirror to see how our presentation of ourselves are. I'm asking the city of Moline to work with me and others to get a deep, hard look at itself, and don't run from whatever we see. The mature person looks at the mirror and sees something that needs to be adjusted, takes their time and adjusts it. And we can do that. The second thing is that we can use our vision to look out the window and look down the road. And I know our, our city, the city of Moline, has an exceptional vision, and that we could pull this off, because we're looking down the road, not just for now. But how do we put those things in place to include a community, whether it's our CACs and how they participate, but how do we invest the dollars of CEBG and all of the funding that comes through there, knowing that those fundings are set aside for low and moderate income individuals that are disproportionately black in our community? How do we get people to the table, whose jobs and whose opportunities have been limited? How do we get more people into ownership? How do we get more people to be able to expand the tributary, so they can see themselves moving down the river in a positive direction? I'll end with this. City of Moline is known for its brand, its moniker. It, the name itself says it all. It refers to the brand of Mills, the city of Mills. And so this is hard work. Anybody ever worked in a mill understands this. And I know that we are prepared, not just because the city is named after Mills, but because of what I've witnessed in the past and what I believe that is in the heart of those that make policy, those that help to think about the future. And so to the mayor and to the council, my deepest appreciation for allowing these few minutes, and know that beyond my rhetoric, that there is a deep and profound commitment to work, and I'm willing to work alongside to make a reality that's beneficial for all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Ford. Thank you for investing your time and your energy with us this evening. And I, I hope that you will be a big part of this part of our story as we navigate it. And I'm just, I'm just sincerely grateful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. My warmest regards and indeed, this appreciation for what you do as a council and mayor for so many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Ford.
Okay. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? I'd like to move into our agenda items. The first item will be presented by KJ Whitley. It's the 2019 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment 2. KJ?
Good evening, all. Tonight, I'm requesting a motion to approve the 2019 Annual Action Plan Substantial Amendment 1. The amendment, the amendment includes $478,057 in CARE Act funding. It includes 10 activities, including broadband, shelter, food, and business loans. I'm asking for consideration tonight also, so we can submit it to HUD tomorrow for a faster approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Alderman Parker. Is there any discussion on this item? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, KJ. I know that we sent you back to the drawing board a couple of times, and I appreciate you hanging in there with us. And also, if Reverend Ford's still on, yeah, he is. Thank you for supporting and partnering with us on executing this. Thanks, KJ.
Thank you all. Thank you.
The next item will be presented by Dirk Kreis, Corporate Counsel, Declaration of State of Emergency.
Thank you, mayor. Over the past week, things have evolved to the point where I advised the mayor that it was time for her to declare a local state of emergency to recognize the impact of COVID on the community. That wasn't even before any of the, the more recent discussion that Reverend was talking about and the events surrounding George Floyd's death. So the, she did, under the powers granted her by the code and by the statute of the state of Illinois, issue the declaration of emergency and the state of local emergency. And that will expire by statutory action at the end of today's council meeting, unless you extend it to go further. The emergency, the executive order she then issued in, as a result of having declared the state of emergency concerning the outdoor dining, which we moved quickly to suspend some of the rules and regulations around how that gets done to move into a more quicker action, as the governor asked every community to do, would also expire at the end. And so this item is combined with the next item on the agenda, and the council, by affirming them, then continues them past the closure of today's council meeting. So that's why we're here.
Motion to approve, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. And just for clarification, that motion is for item two alone, and we'll do a second motion for item three?
Correct.
Yes.
Motion to approve for item number three, approve and continue executive order.
Well, we got to vote on number two first. Sorry, but we'll just hold on to for that for a second. Just for clarification, my own understanding. So the, the emergency, the state of emergency is extended. That's what this vote is, is to extend that from the council's perspective?
They affirm your determination, yes.
Okay, so they, and, and then I extend it after this point?
So then with respect, so the, the declaration of local state of emergency, they recognize your declaration as being true. So that's the check and balance on that.
Okay.
And then when it come, that just establishes things that will help us with FEMA dollars down the road and some other things. But that it also then enables you to issue executive orders, as defined in 23201, about certain topics under the state of emergency. And so when we get to number three in a minute, what's that state of emergency? That was valid and will be valid through the end of this meeting, unless extended by the council.
Okay.
And so.
So just, and just so that I understand it and the council understands it, the state of emergency, if the vote is affirmative now, will continue on. For the state of emergency to be rescinded, does that take an act of council? Or do I have that authority to rescind the state of emergency?
The, the state of emergency would be rescinded by you. If they approved three, the executive action, that would be then rescinded by council, where we would go back to the original rules on the books that you are suspending at the moment, then council suspend. So the declaration of state of emergency, that doesn't require a formal suspension, although we would wrap it all up in a nice bow.
Well, I don't mean this evening's actions, but as we move past the pandemic, or we move into a different state where we no longer view the pandemic as, as causing a state of emergency in our community, how do we discontinue that state of emergency declaration?
It would begin with you saying that I find that there's no longer a state of emergence, a local state of emergency. And then the executive orders that came out of that state of emergency, we would take up on depending on what council does tonight.
Okay, thank you. So is that clear to everybody? Does anybody have any questions about the process we're following here? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. We're now looking at item number three?
So, yes, number three is the, is, again, this is the, your executive order setting aside and enabling us to move quicker than we would have otherwise been able to do. If we had to wait till tonight, all of our restaurants and bars that have outdoor dining would have lost the past weekend, for example. And so you took the direction of the governor to heart to do everything possible to enable it, and so consistent with your powers, you entered that. The executive order sort of clearing out some of those hurdles to getting this done would end at the end, under the statute, at the end of this meeting, unless council affirms it. Then this goes on until council says we're going back to the old ones. So that's how this will work, if they affirmatively approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Alderman Berg, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this, and this is to address the outdoor dining situation?
The only thing I would add, I forgot to add earlier, is our anticipation is that this region will move to Phase 4, June 26th. Now, that was before we've had a lot of proximity to people, not social distancing due to, you know, the, the death of George Floyd and the reaction in the community to that. But generally speaking, we believe that we'll move forward to Phase 4 on June 26th, and then that would probably be the time when all of this would come back to be ended, because then we can return to something more normal.
So in Phase 4, aren't we still restricted to 50 people? Is that applied for the restaurants, or are they, I can't remember what the provisions are in Phase 4 for restaurants?
Restaurants get to open inside, so that they can serve people inside. They'll have fewer tables in the same space, probably, compared to previously. But they would be able to open and operate indoors, so that you'd be able to have people in the premises. You're not limited to 50. It's going to be driven by square footage, as opposed to.
So, I mean, I'm maybe not as confident that we would lift this, this alternative outdoor dining, because that may accommodate some of the volume that they need to have, that they can move it into the outdoors as well.
That's a, that's a fair point, but again, that's probably a likely decision point where council will have an opportunity to revisit.
Agreed. Are there any questions on this? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. I do not believe we have any other this evening. I would now like to welcome public comment. Is there anyone from the public here in the council chambers that would like to address the council? Are you none?
Janine, did we have any submissions for public comment this evening? He did not, ma'am.
Thank you. Without any further public com, without any public comment this evening, is there any further business for the Committee of the Whole? Then I move that we close out of the Committee of the Whole, and we go into our council agenda this evening. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would invite an invocation by Alderman Williams. If, Alderman Williams, will you have an invocation this evening? We can think about it for a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Williams? I believe there will be no invocation this evening. So we'll go into our roll call. Janine, would you please do a roll call?
Alderman Williams? Might have a mute problem.
Alderman Williams, are you on mute? Because we can't hear you.
Can you see him?
Is he on the call?
Is that Waldron or the bottom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's Walderman.
He's one of these two. Neither one of those are muted.
Okay. I don't believe that Alderman Williams is with us this evening.
Okay. Good to note. Thank you. Alderman Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Moyer?
Present.
Scoonmaker?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of May 19th, 2020, and the April financial reports.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Berg. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Scoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill 1064-2020, a resolution amending. Council Bill 1064-2020, a resolution amending Resolution Number 1037-2020, establishing certain practices and procedures for the city of Moline during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Motion to approve 1064-2020, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1065-2020, a resolution approving the declaration of local state of emergency for the city of Moline in response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Motion to approve 1065-2020, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1066-2020, a resolution authorizing the city of Moline, Mayor Executive Order 2020-05-22, instituting temporary regulatory relief for bars and restaurants due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, be approved, affirmed, and continued as per its terms, and establishing certain practices and procedures pursuant to Executive Order 2020-05-22 to temporarily amend and/or suspend restrictions on outdoor dining to assist licensees of bars and restaurants located within Moline during the period that the Illinois Northwest region is in Phase Three of the Restore Illinois Plan.
Motion to approve 1066-2020, Parker.
Second.
Second. Went?
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 1067-2020, a resolution authorizing approval of proposed amendment, substantial amendment two, to the city of Moline's 2019 annual action plan, substantial amendment one, approved by Council Bill 1140-2019 for the purpose of program fund reallocation and authorizing the mayor to implement the program activities set forth in the city of Moline's 2019 annual action plan, substantial amendment two, upon Department of Housing and Urban Development's approval of said amendment two.
Motion to approve 1067-2020, Parker.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Berg. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council Bill 3014-20, I'm sorry, first reading ordinances. Council Bill 3014-2020, an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Amusements of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section Five-1101, License Required Subsection C, by enacting one new subsection one, exception to limit requirements of subsection C. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Janine.
Thank you.
We're now gonna go through some miscellaneous business, and I'd like to take this opportunity to invite Carol Barnes to give us an update on how we're doing with our budget projections. Carol, are you on the call?
She's muted.
She was.
Stephanie Barnes is muted.
She was saying.
Right here.
Carol, are you on the call? There she is. We see you. We can't hear you, though, Carol. She's up in the upper. Carol, we can't hear you.
Hey, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
I'm so sorry. My phone, my phone cut out for some reason. But thank you, Your Honor and council. I'm gonna try to keep it really brief tonight, and I'm gonna kind of stick with the revenues for our update. But I am very pleased to report that for the first five months, our revenues are up 162,000 over what we had originally planned, or a little less than 1%. And Dawn, if you can move down, it'll be two more pages down in the presentation. Oops. You can go back. Let's see. One more page, back. There you go. And although the revenues are up about 162,000 so far for the five months, we do continue to be concerned moving forward, not only due to the COVID-19, but now potentially with the impact of the riots and how they could potentially affect some of our statewide revenue. We've just kind of talked in the office today, and I talked to a couple of our counterparts, just with the impact, especially on Chicago, regarding like some of our sales tax revenue or income tax revenue. Will be two items that we just continue to monitor as we proceed through the next couple of months. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the remaining revenues for May that came in for April that we didn't have last week. And the first one, it's about halfway down your page, if you've actually got it online, you can maybe see it a little better, is our food and liquor tax. This is one that we've really been wondering, you know, what's going to be happening. And so, the numbers for April, this was our first full month of the COVID-19 for food and liquor tax, it's absolutely up 20% from where we had estimated or projected our COVID-19 might be. We were really, several of our sit-down restaurants and most of our bars definitely were greatly hurt because of the COVID-19. But I am pleased to report that we had some drive-throughs that are doing actually better than what, actually better than what they did a year ago in April. They have higher revenues than what they did a year ago, April. But overall, the food and liquor tax is kind of holding its own. We'll see what happens now as we move into June and see May numbers and June as well. But we are thankful for the revenue that is coming in now and also just for the impact that it's having on the businesses, that it's not as bad as what maybe it could have been. If we go down to the next blue bar, our motor fuel tax, the 1%, that is our local 1 cent sale of motor fuel, it is off about $800 from what we had projected for May. And the next big one maybe to talk about here is our hotel motel tax. This is at the bottom of this page and then at the top of the next one. But we're actually up about 16,000 over our COVID-19 projections. But we are only looking at $36,000 of total revenue, where in the past, we've had monthly revenue closer to 160,000. And one thing that Keith and I, you know, talked about, if you look into the month of July, August, and September, you were seeing where we had been hopeful that those hotel motel revenues might be creeping back up. But we're feeling now that they will feel fortunate if they kind of maintain themselves, especially since, like in the last 30 to 40 days, we've heard of a lot of special events being canceled, like the John Deere Classic, some of our Parks and Rec tournaments, the Bex Festival across the river, which we have hotels on both sides of the river for that. We anticipate, because of the losses in some of those special events, that those hotel motel revenues may be low. So, again, that's one to kind of keep our eye on. And moving down to the next couple, our investment revenue is up about $800 for the month of May. It's been pretty stable, although, as you know, the rates are very, very low. And then, the last category I wanted to mention is all of our enterprise funds, the water, sewer, and the sanitation user fees. Just based on the usage, those revenues are down a little bit for the month of May. And we'll continue to monitor those as well, but, yeah, the usage, the usage especially for water, we have been seeing a decline in that. We are still wanting to keep our estimate for the year at about the seven and a half percent reduction, because Tony's considered, continued to monitor that, and it looks like that is a good industry estimate overall. So, if you look along the bottom of the page, you'll see for the month of May, we are down about 167,000 or about 3.7% for the month of May. But overall, if you go clear to the right-hand side of the page, we still are up 162,000 or just a little shy of 1% for the first five months. And that is about all I'm going to say on our sheet. I've included in your packet the normal financials that we look at. We really didn't have any change in those. We'll, again, be doing hopefully some updates for you next, next week. But I would like to recommend that the council consider amending our original budget to the COVID-19 budget with the changes that we have made so far, based on revenues and expenditures. And the main reason I'm asking for that is so that department heads can better manage their budgets. And what I'd like to do is to shoot for June 23rd if council would be in favor of doing that. And just because we amend the budget, doesn't mean that we can't amend it, you know, several times, again, going forward. But it would be very helpful for department heads to be able to view online on the software what the budget to actual numbers are.
Thank you, Carol. I think that the one thing, obviously, we'll be reviewing it when you present it again for consideration. But the one thing that I think is still outstanding is that we didn't have it balanced yet. Our projections for cuts in revenue were still not offset by cuts in expenditures. But in light of that, I'm gonna turn it over to Marty Vonix, who's joining us for his first official meeting as city administrator for the city of Moline. He isn't going to address that gap, but he's gonna, he's gonna share with us kind of where we are. Just, but before we turn it over to Marty, how about council, do you have any questions or do you need clarifications on what Carol presented this evening? Okay, we'll turn it over to Marty.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. First of all, I want to say thanks for the opportunity. I'm glad to be here, and I'm excited to be here, back in Illinois. So, I, this is day number five on the job, and we dealt with states of emergency, COVID, and I'm expecting locusts to arrive tomorrow, so. But anyway, the, I've met a couple times now with Carol, and I've also met with the former interim city administrator and Allison, our HR director. And we're looking at a lot of numbers and a lot of potential cuts to meet that balanced budget goal, as well as looking at what we can cut in order to reach the projections that the COVID-19 pandemic has presented us. So, I expect to have a report to you and some recommendations here later. But I need just a little bit more time before we can make those, those recommendations, so.
Say it?
That's it.
So, I would just recommend to the council, considering Carol's proposal to look at this at our next meeting, that we kind of follow Marty's lead on when he's prepared to present the big picture before we take it into consideration, Carol. So, we may be one more week out, kind of depends on how quickly we get things settled, but will, does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. That's fine.
Thank you, Carol. So, now I'd like to just go around the council chambers. Alderman Williams isn't here. How about Alderman Parker? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Your Honor. You good?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no problem. Couple things. First of all, I was surprised and delighted to hear from Reverend Ford this evening. I think he gave us some great words of wisdom and direction, and hopefully, we can heed them as we move forward. But also, I'd like to move away from that just a little bit and thank everybody that really worked really hard to get the outdoor dining moving forward. And I know it was a team effort, but specifically, I'd like to thank Jeff Manus, Mike Waldron, and Scott Williams for taking that and moving it forward. It's something we absolutely needed and do appreciate all the hard work that they did in a very short period of time. So, other than that, kid moves out on Thursday or on Friday, and I guess that means I'll have more time to myself here. So, have a good one.
Thank you, Alderman Parker. How about Alderman Went? Do you have anything for us this evening?
Sure. I'd like to echo what Alderman Parker said. But I'll also want to say thank you very much for the group that did the peaceful protest in Davenport over into Rock Island and back. I think that that's the model of what we'd like to see in our community, voicing their opinions but doing it properly and respectfully. And I know that the one person that I think was, threw some stuff at the Davenport Court Building was apprehended. So, I want to thank them, and I also want to thank the Moline Police Department for what they've done over the last few days to make sure that our city is safe and secure and wish everybody luck, stay safe, and stay healthy out there.
Thank you, Alderman Went. Alderman Moyer?
Yes, I disagree with that, too. I know it's a big job right now for the police department. And I'd also like to thank Tony Lodi and his team for some of the sanitation things they've been doing in Ward Five. Just throw that out there.
Thank you. Alderman Skoomaker?
Sorry, I didn't anticipate that so quickly. Just echo the good work for the police department, and thank you for keeping us safe and appreciate those who can respectfully disagree and protest and just try to maintain safety among our community. We think that's quite important. Respect and safety.
Thank you, Alderman Skoomaker. Alderman Waldron?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Other member?
And I just will say thank you and echo thanks, Chief, for all that you do and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to draw the attention of the council to the curfew. So, we worked in our neighbor, with our neighboring communities to establish kind of a consistent, a consistent curfew so that our community would understand what the rules were as you move from community to community. And just to give you a little bit of background, Scott County declared the curfew because they have that authority. On the Iowa side, on the Illinois side, our county doesn't have the authority to declare a curfew like that. So, the individual municipalities had to establish that individually. So, as of yesterday, it was East Moline, Moline, Silvis, Rock Island, Myland, Rapid City, and Hampton. All were declaring basically the same order for curfew. The consensus of those mayors is to continue that curfew on. So, the curfew moving forward from this evening would be the same format, and it would be in place until we rescind it. And I just wanted to open up to the council, if you have any concerns about the curfew or questions about the curfew. Okay. I'd now like to open it up to staff. Does anyone on the staff have anything they want to share with us? Is there any further business this evening? Is there any public comment? No new public comment. Without any further business, I welcome a motion to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn from Alderman Moyer.
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Berg. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Skoomaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. And I had a goal of one hour, and y'all did it in 15 minutes. I am impressed. Thank you. Have a safe evening, everyone.